Good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. If we could have a determination of quorum, please.
Sarah Savileczek?
Here.
Larry Chesney?
Present.
James Barnes?
Here.
Thomas Bruce?
Here.
Francine Doncic?
Here.
Philip Haran?
Present.
Michael Lawson?
Present.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Doncic, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards, if we could have the ethics announcement, please?
Commissioners are reminded that if with respect to any matter or any person coming before the commission today, you have received a gift or loan, you have a pecuniary interest, you have a commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship, or you provided representation or counseling before an agency to a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter being considered tonight, you must disclose that gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered. And you must furthermore abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it is clear that the gift, loan, interest, commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commissioners are also reminded that under the Planning Commission rules, if you have had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the commission today, you should disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting.
Thank you very much. The appeals process procedure, Mr. Lloyd?
All right, most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning Commission and you want to appeal its action, you may do so in writing within 10 calendar days from the date the decision being appealed is signed by the Planning Commission Chair and/or the Secretary of the Planning Commission, filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission, and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at (328) 6100 for information on the appeal procedure and application fee. And I should remind you tonight on your agenda, only items 9A and 9B are appealable.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lloyd. Do we have any general public comment?
We do. Roger Edwards?
Welcome. You'll just state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, see if I remember how this works. My name's Roger Edwards. I'm living in Golden Valley, 3405 War Paint Circle in Golden Valley. I'm a close to 30-year resident. And sat on this commission for a couple of days. What we need to be concerned about in Golden Valley and everywhere else in the counties for like concern is explosive growth on the borders. You know, I remember fighting everything that the city did. But you know, the city put a fence across the highway-
Away in 395, and no county residents could come down the road anymore than we would get involved. But I suggest that building 10,000 homes in Cold Springs and dumping those people on the 395 is the same thing as building a fence across the highway. I'm retired, I don't have to go anywhere, but there's a whole bunch of other people that still have to go to work every day. And we've got people from Golden Valley on RTC Planning Boards and all this sort of thing. But that's not nearly the kind of voice that this county could have into development on the borders. If they're going to put 10,000 new homes out in Cold Springs, the impact of 395 North can't be described. So I would like to recommend that somehow, and I don't know exactly how you do all that with the legal in and outs of it, but the county needs to have a voice on these. Every project that dumps onto a major arterial that's going to impact at the level of 10,000 new homes, we have to have some kind of a voice in it. And I know it's hard to break through the RTC history and all that sort of thing, but there's got to be some way to do it. And Golden Valley is fighting it, but I think it needs to happen at a county level because you guys will have more juice and get Trevor or somebody, or Bob or somebody to craft some kind of a request, declaration, I don't know what fits. Nate can maybe come up with something, to get the county's voice as a credible partner in the decision-making process of large developments like this on the border. That's my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Any other public comment?
No further public comment.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Did you- Commissioner Doncic and Commissioner Chesney, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And then a motion to approve the draft minutes of December 5th.
Move to- Commissioner Chesney to the chair. Move to approve the minutes.
Mr. Doncic, second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We're now to planning items, item 8A. Before I have Mr. Lloyd read this into the record, I just will remind my fellow commissioners and the audience that this is an information-only presentation at my request, and I really appreciate you coming to present to us. I mean, I cannot express how much I appreciate you coming to enlighten us this evening. And just my commissioners, it is all information-only. You can ask clarative questions and Nate will keep us out of trouble. So, Mr. Lloyd, if you could read the item.
Thank you. Sighting before us tonight is a presentation on the Stonegate Master Plan and Zoning Map Amendment Project located in the city of Reno. It's a request that has been made to establish a planned unit development on a site that is 1,737 acres in size, that includes 5,000 residential units, associated public facilities, open space, and non-residential development. The request includes a master plan amendment from 1,034 acres of industrial, 238 acres of unincorporated transition, 412 acres of single-family residential, and 52 acres of urban residential commercial, to 41 acres of industrial, 658 acres of mixed residential, 215 acres of urban residential commercial, 338 acres of single-family residential, and 485 acres of parks and recreation, open space. Secondly, a zoning map amendment from 1,034 acres of industrial, commercial, 1,018 acres of an unincorporated transition, 40 acres, UT 40, 412 acres of large lot residential, 52 acres of arterial commercial, and 119 acres of open space to planned unit development. And three, tentative approval of the associated PUD handbook. Four parcels totaling 1,378 acres in size are located southwest of the US 395 White Lake Parkway interchange, south of US 395 Frontage Road, and east of Stollet Lane. Two parcels totaling 359 acres in size are located on the northwest side of the interstate of US 395 and White Lake Parkway. The request is considered a project of regional significance for housing that exceeds 625 units, traffic that exceeds 6,250 ADT or average daily trips, seawater usage that exceeds 625 acre feet per year, and sewage that exceeds 187,500 gallons per day, student population that exceeds 325 students, and employment that exceeds 938 employees. And from the applicant's representative, Angela Foose is here that's going to give a brief presentation on this project. And thank you, Angela.
Check.
Good evening. For the record-
No, I think you turned yourself off now.
How about now?
There you go.
Okay. Good evening again. For the record, Angela Foose with Lumison Associates here today on behalf of Stonegate. We have been to the cab a number of times, and I know a couple of you have seen this presentation, but probably the other half of you have not seen this presentation. So I tried to put together a presentation that highlighted the key areas that I thought would be of most interest to you, mostly related to traffic and utilities, schools, and public services. So I'm going to just walk through some of those key areas, and then because this is not a voting or really a discussion item, I just want to highlight that we would be more than happy to sit down with any of you to go over any specific questions. So feel free to reach out to me afterwards if you have any interest in that. So just to kind of acquaint you with where the site is located, as Trevor said, this is about 1,700 acres. It's located in the Cold Springs area. It's on both sides of 395. So we have about 360 acres there on the north side of 395, and then the remaining about 1,400 acres is on the south side of 395. We are looking at about 5,000 residential units. We also have several hundred acres of non-residential development, meaning commercial and industrial type of development, and over 25% of this is going to be retained as open space. This is a master plan community, so we're going through the process now of doing a master plan amendment and a zone change. And our zone change will be part of a planned unit development, and this will be within the city of Reno. So as part of that PUD, what we've done is we've put a map together that calls where we're going to have different densities and different types of development. There on the north side of 395 is where we have the bulk of our non-residential development. So that's what we call our town center. That's where you have industrial acreage. You also have areas for shopping centers, more of your big retail, if you're going to have a grocery store out here, this is where you'd have it. If you're going to have an urgent care, that's where you'd have it. On the south side of 395, that's where we're having the bulk of our residential. So everything there in the yellow and the orange is where we're having different densities of residential. And it ranges from apartments and condos and townhomes up to large lots where we have one acre and, you know, potentially five-acre custom lots. So it's really a mix of different densities, and overall, we're looking at about 2.87 dwelling units per acre. The site has been developed with five phases, and this helps us to figure out kind of incrementally how we impact traffic and how we impact utilities. We're looking at about a 20-year timeline, and that's typical for most big planned unit developments. You can look at South Meadows, Wingfield, Somerset, Collin Ranch. Those typically started out, again, as planned unit developments that were developed over the course of 20 years. And as you've seen, we have ups and downs with recessions and development booms. So that's our best guess about how long it's going to take for ultimate build-out. So all of the development with the infrastructure will be phased based on this phasing plan, and that includes bringing in the utilities, putting in the major roads. We also have schools as part of that, impacts to White Lake Interchange as part of that. So all of that will be tied in with the phasing. One of the key amenities for this project really is the parks, trails, and open space. This property has been privately owned for the last century, and it's been fenced off. So it has never been open to the public. This is the first time now that it will be open to the public, and we're trying to make that really a key element. So we have all these natural drainage ways that we want to retain. These drainage ways are about 150 feet wide, if you can imagine that. So imagine where you're going to have trails, you're going to have parks built into that. We also have different areas where we have connections to Forest Service. And again, right now, it's private, and we don't have those connections, so this will all be open to the public. This is not a gated community, so everyone will have access to these parks and to these facilities. We have about eight miles of trail system, and as part of this design, we were looking at the concept of the safe routes to schools, meaning you can walk out of your house, get on a trail, and safely get to a school. So those are the kind of things that we thought about when we put together this whole master plan community. Schools is another big topic that's come up. When we initially submitted this application, it was back in 2016, so that was before WC-1 passed. Once WC-1 passed, it really accelerated the ability to build schools. So we've had very lengthy discussions with the school district, and what we found is they know that they are going to probably need two elementary schools for Stonegate, but they're not sure of the timing. Really, it's going to be based on the demographic that moves in. You know, for instance, if you have a senior community, like a Dell Webb community, 55 and older, you're not going to have a lot of kids, you're not going to have a need for schools. But maybe the next phase of development has single-family starter homes, so you're probably going to have more kids. So what we've done is we've located four potential elementary school sites, everything there with a yellow star is potentially where a school site could go. And then we have an agreement with the school district so that if they need a school in Phase 1, we have the site picked out, it's nine acres, that site will then be dedicated to them. If they say, you know what, we're not ready to build a school within your Phase 1, we'll say, okay, we'll take that out of the equation, you let us know if you need that school by Phase 2, and then we have the site picked out for Phase 2. So that way we can actually plan development based on their needs. We also have a high school site planned on the north side, and that's another discussion item with the school district. If and when they're ready for a high school, we have about 80 acres set aside for them that we'll have to enter an agreement for them on that property. So that does not have an agreement on yet, but we are in negotiations with them if they decide that they need another high school out in the north valleys and can't find adequate land, this site is set aside for them, and they are very interested in that property. And I want to talk about utilities. The two big issues related to utilities are sewer and water. So here's a map to show you where sewer service will come from. Again, the yellow star at the bottom is Stonegate, and will tie into the Cold Springs Water Reclamation Facility, which is about four miles away. So Stonegate will be responsible for actually constructing that sewer line, and then it will tie into a Washoe County sewer treatment plant. And this is common, we see this quite often, where you have a city property that ties into a Washoe County facility. We have these joint use agreements, we have them in other areas within Reno and Washoe County. So that's an agreement between Washoe County Engineering and City of Reno Engineering that they'll work out, and then that will go before the two boards, City Council and County Commission, to approve that joint use agreement. In terms of water, the water will come from Tamoa. And here we have a blue line that shows you that six-mile water line. So this will tie into a main that's currently at the intersection of Lemon and North Virginia. So Stonegate, again, will be responsible for putting in that line, paying to put in that line, and servicing to Stonegate. A lot of questions have been asked from the county perspective of what will happen to my well and my septic when Stonegate comes online and puts in the sewer line and the water line. This will have no impact on existing sewer and septic facilities. This is, again, strictly Stonegate's putting it in for their use. If somebody else wants to tie into that, they'll have to work with either Tamoa or Washoe County to tie into that line, but they will not be negatively impacted by the sewer or water. In terms of fire service, the closest City of Reno fire station is located instead, so that is past the acceptable response time. So we've worked out an agreement with the City of Reno that Stonegate will be responsible for really two big things. One is within the first 250 homes, so within that first phase, Phase 1 of development, they'll have to put in what we're calling an emergency medical service facility. So this is kind of a new concept for this area, but we've seen in other areas where the fire station will be built by Stonegate, and it will be for EMS only. So it will not house a typical fire station with fire trucks, it will house firemen to serve with emergency medical service. So if they get a 911 call, the majority of their calls right now are for medical needs, so they will be there to provide that service. Once we get to the 1,700th building permit, so again, within that first phase, then Stonegate will actually have to provide the land and build a fire station, and that will be within Phase 1. They also have to provide two fire trucks and an ambulance. And all of that, then, is the responsibility of Stonegate. So that land and the building will then be given over to the City of Reno. Along with that, they'll have to provide a police substation. So this is, again, a smaller area associated with that building, but it will be set aside for police. So while police are out doing their duty, if they have to stop and make a report, this gives them a place to stop if they need to stop and take a break, it gives them that ability to do that. Traffic is obviously a big topic for anyone that has lived or traveled in the north valleys. And what we've done is we've done a comparison based on what you can do with this property right now. And you're looking at industrial zoning of about 1,000 acres, so you're looking at most likely industrial-type development is what you can do with it now. Warehousing, semi-trucks, and what are the traffic impacts? Everything in blue on this map or this graph shows you what the trip generation would be based on today's current zoning, and then we did a comparison based on what we're proposing. And again, that's based on this entire master plan community. As you can see, it's about half of the traffic impact. And you're looking at different types of traffic, because if you have industrial traffic, again, it's big trucks, so they take up more lanes, they're just bigger, and they're slower. So we're looking at more of, you know, average daily trips being cars and trucks. So it's a different kind of traffic. The other thing we're looking at is, well, what are the impacts going to be on 395? And we've been working for the last probably four years now with both NDOT and RTC, and they've been updating their plans, going through those updates, and as part of that, they put Stonegate in their model, meaning everything that they do, they know that Stonegate is on the horizon to be developed over the next 20 years. So we've been working with them and saying, okay, let's time RTC's improvements and NDOT's improvements with Stonegate, just to have a general idea of what kind of improvements we're going to be planning for right now. So this is an idea. And here, it's a lot of detail, but the big thing that I wanted to point out is, you know, outside of the spaghetti bowl, which we know is moving forward, they're working through that NEPA process, they're working through that, there's a lot of things planned for 395. That includes widening portions of 395. Just this year, they're making plans to restripe the area between Parr and McCarran, which would add another lane going south. And then by 2021, they're looking at actually adding a lane more between Lemon and McCarran. So that's going both directions, north and south. So there's a lot of big changes coming, and again, that's based on having this traffic as part of that model. Flood mitigation is definitely something that's come up a lot this last year with this horrific winter that we had. So what we wanted to do was show you kind of what the existing flood routes, I guess you'd call it, or drainage channels look like, and then what we're proposing as part of the development. One thing that's kind of interesting is that when 395 was constructed, NDOT went through and rechanneled a lot of the water that came across that property. So things were done that doesn't follow that natural course. So what we'll be doing, then, is taking water that doesn't typically cross 395 at certain times and channelizing it, and then taking it under 395. There's already some culverts under 395, so you go from Peavine, where water just naturally comes off the mountain, goes under 395, and ends up in White Lake. And we'll be able to capture that water. Again, we have these very wide natural drainage corridors, like I said, some are up to 150 feet wide, so they'll be able to capture that water and then put it into Swan Lake. One thing that we are cognizant of is that this is a closed basin, similar to Swan Lake, which is a closed basin. There's nowhere for the water to go, correct? So one of the conditions as part of this project that we are meeting is that flood mitigation ratio. And you've probably heard this ratio of, you know, for every amount of water that leaves, you provide equal amount of flood mitigation storage. We're doubling that. So instead of a one-to-one flood mitigation ratio, it's a one-to-two. So that is something that will alleviate some of the concerns so that we don't have a Swan Lake similar instance. The other thing that's unique about White's Lake that's different from Swan Lake is the effluent. A lot of the issues they're having with Swan Lake has to do with effluent that dumps into Swan Lake. There's no effluent being dumped into White Lake, so it's a very different scenario. And again, we are planning ahead because we know there's issues in these closed basins, and we don't want to have something like what's happened in the Lemon Valley area happen in this area. And then one of the last things I wanted to touch on was really fiscal impacts. And this comes back to what does development do that actually helps anyone? You know, this development itself is residential and non-residential. And over time, you need non-residential to pay for the residential because of that depreciating value. So the benefit of this project in providing both residential and non-residential is that you come up with a positive fiscal analysis at the end of your 20-year look. So here's a lot of facts up here. The big numbers that I wanted to call out were increases to the general fund, and this is a surplus. So after you guys pay for your street fund and all your improvements to your facilities, at the end of the day, are you in the negative because of Stonegate, or are you in the positive because of Stonegate? So here's some big numbers that show you as Washoe County citizens, City of Reno citizens as well, and just in general, some of the permitting fees that will then go to pay for some of these big infrastructure costs. Sewer permit fees, so the development of Stonegate will have to tie into Washoe County, and they'll have to pay the Washoe County sewer permit fees. That's over $30 million. And that $30 million will go to expand that sewer treatment plant. So again, that's a positive. The taxes from Stonegate will also pay for 15 new police officers. And that's not police officers dedicated to Stonegate, that's just police officers dedicated to the city of Reno. Same with firefighters. Those firefighters don't go to Stonegate firehouses, they go to the general firefighter fund. So that contributes overall to helping with the city of Reno. In terms of road impact fees, we have over $22 million that will be paid as part of the regional road impact fee. And the other thing that we're calling out, as I would call really helping from a fiscal perspective, is this whole affordable housing crisis. There's affordable housing in terms of market rate, and then there's affordable housing in terms of truly subsidized affordable housing. And so as part of Stonegate, we have added a requirement that within Phase 5, we have a requirement for 200 units, these are 200 apartment units, that will be the subsidized 60% of your average median income. And so we purposely put that in Phase 5 because right now, there's no public transit out here. But hopefully, by the time we get to Phase 5, again, 20 years from now, public transit will be out in this area, and that's when it makes sense to provide subsidized affordable housing, because you have the transit and the jobs to be able to supply those people. In timeline and process, we initially submitted an application to the City of Reno back in July of 2016, so that was 18 months ago. Prior to that, about a year and a half to two years' worth of planning went into putting an application together. And that's everything from looking at sewer and soil, drainage and roads. So we are about four years into this process. We went to Planning Commission in September of 2017, so this last year, and Planning Commission approved both the master plan and the PUD. We are scheduled for the Reno City Council hearing next Wednesday, and that will be the first reading. We do go through a process where first, we have to go to City Council, then we'll go on to the Regional Planning Commission, and then we'll go back to City Council two more times. So it's a long road to get to where we ultimately will end up, but I'm hopeful that probably by March, we will be through this process, after which time, we'll start submitting for special use permits and tentative maps. And all of that will go back for regional, not regional, City of Reno Planning Commission review. This project, like I said, will go before Regional Planning Commission, so several of you will be seeing this project again when City of Reno presents it before you. And that is all I have. So again, keep in mind that I know it's quick, and I know that this doesn't really afford you a lot of time for questions and answers, but we are more than happy to sit down with any of you and go through any of the details, because I know there's a lot of rumors going on, and there's been a lot of questions over traffic and flood concerns, and we are more than happy to sit down and kind of walk through with some of our engineers the details on anything that you're interested in. Thank you.
So commissioners, recognizing that this is information-only if you have some basic questions, and Mr. Edwards will keep us out of trouble. So commissioners, do you have any basic questions that you would like to ask?
Madam Chair, and I would just, to follow up on what you just said, the questions, I think, that are appropriate would be like clarification of the points of the presentation that you just watched. Just keep in mind that this is not an item that's within your jurisdiction. However, some of you, as Ms. Foose just referenced, will in all likelihood be hearing this and your role as regional planning commissioners at some point.
So questions specific to the presentation?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Angela, first of all, thank you for an excellent presentation. I think you do a fantastic job. Some questions about the traffic.
Yeah.
Is there any traffic report available for public review?
There is. We have a traffic report as part of our submittal. So it is online, if you can navigate through the City of Reno website, or I can forward you a copy by email.
I'll navigate, thank you. I just wanted to know where to go. With respect to the, you showed some interesting travel forecasts with respect to the existing zoning as industrial, and then the traffic volumes that would be associated with that zoning. Is that predicated on a full build-out, and is that in the travel demand model in that TAZ? And that's part one of my question. Part two is, when you developed the forecast for your project, did you use the travel demand model, and did you modify that TAZ with trip generations based on your development?
That's a lot of detail. I'm probably not going to go into that answer without having a traffic engineer here who prepared that report, but I will tell you, when we looked at existing zoning versus proposed- But I will tell you, when we looked at existing zoning versus proposed, we looked at the existing zoning, part of it zoned industrial, part of it has some commercial zoning, and part of it has more of a UT40 or residential-type zoning. So, we took that into consideration, and we used, based on the industrial and the commercial, we made some assumptions based on typical development. We looked at like typical floor area ratio, meaning how much building you have over how much land you have for typical like Amazon-type projects where you have big buildings. There's a lot of them going on right now in the North Valleys. So, we looked at those and said, okay, how are those being developed? And let's make some assumptions that you could put a similar-sized building on the acreage that we have, but we kept it in comparison to how much they set aside for parking and landscaping and drive aisles. So, based on that, it gave us square footage of buildings and use, industrial use mostly. And then, we converted that into how many vehicle miles traveled, VMTs, and how much traffic, whether it's average daily trips or peak hour trips.
Okay. That's, thank you. It sounds like you used ITE trip generation tables rather than the TransCAD model.
I can't, so as the non-traffic engineer, I can't go into specifically which version they used.
Okay.
Yeah, but we can get you a copy of the traffic engineer report.
Okay, great. What was interesting is because you were making comments about the improvements being already on, being proposed by RTC and NDOT with respect to proximity to the Spaghetti Bowl. And when you were talking about those and adding lanes, you made a statement that this traffic is already considered in that. And if it's not incorporated in those TAZs in the North Valleys, I don't see how it could be. And having looked at that corridor quite a bit over the last several decades, I know that congestion in there right now is sufficient to warrant those improvements. And so, those improvements will bring that level of service back up to barely operational as I see it. And so, when you start talking about whatever traffic you're bringing in with 5,000 homes or in the North Valleys, I just find it hard to believe that the improvements that are existing in the planner can accommodate that. So, I respect that, but I just, I find it, I'm having difficulty understanding some of the technical details. I'll look at the report, and I'll call you up for follow-up if I have some.
Yeah. And one thing too with RTC, we've had a lot of discussions with them. They look at development when they're doing their 20, you know, their updates. Their most recent, I think, was their 2040 RTP plan. And they look at proposed development. So, if somebody comes forward with a zone change or a tentative map, they include that as part of their model for moving forward. And that helps to kind of set the, I would say, the parameters to say, gosh, it looks like there's a lot of development on Sky Vista that's planned. It's not there yet, but it's been approved, so we can anticipate that it's going to be there in the next 20 years, and we're looking at a 20-year forecast. So, we should plan for improvements on Sky Vista because we know that development's been approved and is coming. And so, that's kind of the dialogue we've had with them. So, when we told them that we were coming forward with this master plan zone change, we gave them the ultimate build-out over 20 years. So, they were able to put that in and say, okay, if we know this is coming, and again, they know our timeline, we're guessing about 20 years. They're able to put that into their model. Keep in mind too, for RTC roads, most of this is internal. So, 395 is the NDOT road. So, those models, NDOT's models, are different from RTC's, but they all include future development, such as this development, if that makes sense.
Makes sense.
NDOT doesn't have a separate model. NDOT uses the RTC TransCAD model. So, they are the same model, and I'd be curious to talk to you about what's in that TAZ, and I'll check with your report. But thank you very much.
Any other questions from Commissioners with regards to the presentation? Commissioner Hran?
I don't have a question. I just have an observation, and that is that, you know, I don't know of any development of a larger city of Reno and Sparks that is not in the U.S., that is not already running behind on infrastructure, and I don't know how this is going to catch us up, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
We really appreciate your time. Now, we're on to item, beginning of our public hearings, item nine. If I could call for the agenda item and identify the general nature of the proceedings. Mr. Lloyd?
Okay, item 9A is an abandonment, case number WAV17-0... Am I reading the, I'm sorry, I was reading from the minutes. Knew that wasn't right. I'm not going to steal yours. Well, I was correct. This is 9A. This is master plan amendment, case number WMPA18-000X. In fact, we don't have a case number yet for the Sun Valley area plan. For possible action hearing and discussion to initiate an amendment to the Washoe County Master Plan, Volume 2, Sun Valley Area Plan, Policy SUN.1.2, to remove the sentence, "New single-family detached residential, including mobile homes, will not be allowed within the DCMA." If approved, this amendment would allow new single-family detached residential uses, including mobile homes, within the downtown character management area as identified on the Sun Valley Character Management Plan map. Also, item 9A2, which is the Development Code Amendment for the Sun Valley Area Plan modifiers, for possible action hearing and discussion to initiate an amendment to Chapter 110 of the Washoe County Code at 110.218.35A to remove neighborhood commercial office or NC zoning from the areas in which mobile homes and manufactured homes are prohibited to be placed and from planning and building. The staff representative is Roger Pelham.
Okay. Do we have any disclosure by Commissioners for either ethics or ex parte? Okay. I'll open the public hearing.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the Commission. For the record, Roger Pelham with Washoe County Planning. The request before you this evening is to initiate these two amendments, one to the master plan, the Sun Valley Area Plan, and then one to the Development Code. The reason for this is the DCMA, the Downtown Character Management Area, within the Sun Valley Area Plan during the update process, number of years ago, most of that area was rezoned to neighborhood commercial. The idea being that that area along sort of the main thoroughfare in Sun Valley would eventually develop commercially, that we would prohibit new manufactured homes in that area to sort of create an incentive for folks to develop commercial. That has not occurred. There have been many situations in which we've had folks standing at our front desk, they've had a third-acre parcel adjacent to Sun Valley. All of their neighbors still have manufactured homes on those parcels, and they've had one there in the past. It's been removed for greater than 12 months. It's no longer an existing non-conforming use, that is to say, it's no longer grandfathered in. And now, essentially, they can't put a dwelling there. Not only can they not put a manufactured, they couldn't put a single-family dwelling there either. The thought behind this was a good one, and the idea was really to create that incentive to really bring up the aspect along Sun Valley Boulevard. In the time since this was put in place, it's my opinion that it was just kind of one bridge too far. And I just don't know that in practice, it has been successful so far. And we've had a lot of situations where folks have essentially been unable to do anything with this sort of one piece of property that's surrounded by others that, again, are still developed with manufactured homes. This has happened a number of times. The idea now is that if we can initiate these changes, what it would do would be to create at least a path where someone could come in and request to be able to put a manufactured home, or essentially, a single-family dwelling on one of these parcels within the downtown character management area. This would actually be consistent with all of the other area plans in which single-family residential is allowed in the neighborhood commercial zones, subject to a special use permit. That is the request before you. That's kind of why we're bringing it forward, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioners?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Chesney.
Roger, how many parcels are we, approximately, are we talking about? Are there just one specifically right now, or?
No, we are not talking about one specifically. We've had a number of folks come in. In the middle of the Sun Valley Area Plan there, I'll try to describe it as darker pink right along Sun... Sun Valley is, you can see, sort of runs north-south there.
Right.
Pardon me for turning my back on you, but I will point it out. Okay, the laser doesn't work on those screens. If you can look over your shoulders here, this is the downtown character management area. Here's sort of the central portion of Sun Valley right along Sun Valley Boulevard. I'm going to guess, there's probably 100, there might be a couple of hundred parcels there within that area.
So, then I guess the other part of the question is, would these folks actually be allowed to put a single-family dwelling or a mobile home right on Sun Valley Boulevard? Is that what we're...
On parcels, all of the downtown character management area either fronts on Sun Valley Boulevard or is one or two parcels back on either side. Generally, the access is not from Sun Valley Boulevard. Generally, the access is through surface streets.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Hran?
Is that where you just pointed the, well, the DCMA, the arrow going down off to the, as I see it to my left, that green area, is that where the school is on top of the... I'm just trying to reference where that is. There's a school up there someplace. Is that where that is?
The new middle...
No, there's an existing elementary school.
The existing elementary school would be right up here, if, actually, if you can...
Right up there, okay. All right. Okay, the other question I have is that in the other areas where this is allowed, do we have, have we, has that happened very often?
No, it's very seldom.
So, it's really not an issue in the other places either? It's only an issue here?
Generally speaking, yes. That's my, that's my opinion.
So, if we do this, really, we give up on trying to change that?
I don't think so.
Well...
The reason I would disagree there is because we can still, we can only do this subject to the approval of a special use permit. And that would allow us to place conditions on it which could still bring up the visual aspect of Sun Valley Boulevard.
What would you condition to if you're going to allow a mobile home or manufactured home, or whatever you want to call them? If you're going to do that, what does the condition, how does the condition make it improve it?
Well, I would answer that two ways. One, I'm speculating here because I don't have a set of plans in front of me, but I would speculate things like screening and landscaping that would be similar to new commercial uses.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Don Cech?
Roger, to clarify, you mentioned that there's been several. So, from what I'm trying to understand, some of these, a lot of these lots have been modular or singular homes, and for some reason, the home was taken out, and they didn't come back in under the timeframe that they were grandfathered in.
That is correct.
So, that lot is just sitting there empty now because they want to put something back on there like a home and can't because of the regulations that were put in. Is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
Okay.
Could I have a follow-up? If I, I'm sorry. I can't see the red light. The, are these people, people who bought the lot when it was empty and thought they could put something on and then found out they couldn't? Is that what that is?
I recall that exact situation in at least one case, yes. At least one person that I had at the front desk, that was the exact situation. I suspect that in other cases, the person has owned the underlying property for quite a long time, and oftentimes, folks will rent that, bring in their own manufactured home, and then move it off to someplace else. That actually happens fairly frequently, where one person will own the land and someone else will own the dwelling on it.
Mr. Lloyd?
Can I jump in really quickly too? And one thing I don't think Roger mentioned, we also have a situation where there's numerous manufactured mobile homes that may be very small, maybe, you know, single rather than a double. And those folks also, they cannot improve their property. They cannot take off the old smaller unit and bring, being in a bigger one, because of the non-conformance issue that Roger touched upon, you're limited basically to a 10% expansion, and that's it, a one-time 10% expansion. So, this amendment would alleviate that issue, that concern that we currently have in Sun Valley along that corridor.
Just another one, just to clarify, because maybe I didn't hear. Did you say the average size was a third of an acre? I mean, it's not a lot of...
Many of these parcels are a third of an acre. They're sort of the old, they used to be medium-density suburban, some of them high-density suburban, but mostly medium-density suburban, which is three dwellings to the acre. So, many of these are in that third-acre range.
So, the thought is if somebody wanted to do something commercial, they would have to buy several of these up to be able to build something because there's not a lot of empty spaces? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Hran?
Let's take one more crack at it here. What is the driving force behind this change? I mean, it just seems like, you know, has this been building for the last three years? You finally got around to it, or what's the driving force?
The driving force is the number of folks that we've had at the front desk who have been unable to utilize their land in the way that they'd like to.
And the driving, the number of people is 10, 15, five, 30?
I'm going to say a dozen or so. I'm going to say one every other month-ish, you know? Enough that it's been identified as a problem over a longer period of time, over a couple of three or four years.
It may be a hard number to quantify, but all of the planners have addressed, have come in to contact with somebody that has had this issue.
And as it was brought to my attention too, that this is a priority issue for the planning department to just get this cleaned-up language in.
I have one more question.
Do we have any public comment?
I can tell you, I'm one of the people they're talking about.
Okay.
I have no cards for public comment at this time.
So, you would need to fill one of those out, but...
You have a public comment, I'm telling you.
You're one of those applicants, okay. Would you like to add anything other than, we do need to have you say for the record who you are, and then you can fill out a comment card.
For the record, I'm Ron Bell. I own the property at 1009 Grumpy, and I've been in front of the planning department and shared this story with many people, and it's just draconian what's going on. I bought this not knowing, not disclosed to me it was neighborhood commercial, and went there, and there was a double ride on there, and they go, well, geez, you know, now you can only put a single ride. And all of a sudden, next thing you know, a year goes by, and now, guess what? You can't build. So, I'm paying taxes like everybody else. I'm literally surrounded by, well, manufactured homes, used to be called mobile homes, and same thing, nobody else can improve or anything. So, my lot just sits there empty, and I pay just as much taxes as the guy next to me. So, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. We have no other public comment? Okay. So, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the board for consideration for further questions.
Well, my question has been answered satisfactorily. I'm going to support the motion.
Okay. So...
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Chesney.
Would you accept a motion? I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report, the Washoe County Planning Commission initiate the amendments to the Washoe County Master Plan, Volume 2, Sun Valley Area Plan, at Policy SUN.1.2, to remove the sentence, "New single-family detached residential, including mobile homes, will not be allowed within the DCMA," and also initiate an amendment to the Washoe County Code at 110.218.35A to remove neighborhood commercial office zoning from the areas in which mobile homes and manufactured homes are prohibited to be placed as described in the staff report. I further move to authorize the chair to sign and attach the resolution.
Madam Chair? I second. Is there a second? Okay. Do we have questions before?
I'd just like to, you know, I'm going to support the motion. I think that the question, the presentation certainly outlined what the issue was and the questions answered were satisfactory. So, I'm going to support the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now, we're to 9B. So, ask for the agenda item in case I amend the general nature of the proceedings. Mr. Lloyd?
All right. Development Code Amendment, Case Number W D C A 17 dash 0003, Outdoor Entertainment. For possible action, hearing, and discussion. One, to amend Washoe County Code, Chapter 110, within Article 302, allowed uses to establish the regulatory zones wherein the outdoor entertainment and livestock events' use types are permitted by right or by discretionary action. Within Article 304, the Use Classification System to redefine the outdoor entertainment use type and to create and define the commercial recreation livestock event use type. And within Article 310, temporary uses to ensure the description of temporary outdoor entertainment uses is consistent with Article 338, Outdoor Entertainment. And two, to create a new article, Article 338, Outdoor Entertainment, to establish the processes, regulations, and standards specific to establishing both temporary and permanent outdoor entertainment uses by expanding the definition of outdoor entertainment to include facilities and events for the assembly of 100 or more spectators and participants for any purpose in any outdoor location. To identify a wider range of typical outdoor entertainment activities, to establish permit application and review processes for minor, major, and temporary outdoor entertainment permits, to establish the thresholds to distinguish each permit type, to provide for certain exemptions for establishing the use type on federal land and to affect other items necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto. And if approval is recommended, to authorize the chair to sign a resolution to that effect. From staff of planning and billing is Eric Young, Senior Planner.
Before the presentation, any disclosures by commissioners for ethics or ex parte communications?
I need to disclose that I did contact Eric about, around October 12th, following the first presentation. And we had a short discussion of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Bruce. Okay, Mr. Young?
Madam Chair, I also need to disclose I've had numerous ex parte conversations with the people I represent in district two.
The things that we're talking about in terms of the ethics law are pecuniary interest, commitment in a private capacity, receipt of a gift or loan, or representation of someone before another agency on this matter. Commissioner Lawson, the only one that I can think of that sounds possibly germane to the disclosure you made would be making a commitment in a private capacity. In those discussions of this item with members in the area where you're appointed to represent, did you make any commitments in a private capacity to vote one way or the other, for example, on this?
No, sir, I did not. I was just listening to their concerns.
Thank you. And would your discussions with them influence your ability to be impartial in making decisions on this?
No, they would not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Okay. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Eric. I'm Eric Young from the Planning Division. The Planning Commission originally heard this item on October 3rd and sent staff away with some direction to make some, to have another workshop and consider some adjustments to the original draft. And so, for tonight's presentation, we've had some discussion about where to start. Because October 3rd is a little while back. And so, if any of you would like to be reminded about what this is originally about and what we went over when we discussed the original amendments and the original proposed changes, we can do that, okay? But what we determined to do was to try and give you the presentation sort of where we left off. Now, for the audience and everybody else's benefit, we're going to start a little bit back, but not even close to all the way back. So, why are we here? On November 29th of 2016, so getting a while back ago, the Board of County Commissioners initiated a Development Code Amendment around the outdoor entertainment use type. They wanted to expand the definition. They want to expand where it could go, the regulatory zones. And they wanted to make some determinations on whether discretionary process was necessary or not. So, we established, as we typically do when we're going to set off on the path for amendments, we establish some goals. I had five goals here. That was to expand the range like we were asked to do, where it can go as a permanent use, broaden the definition, to reduce the number of tiers of review. There are a lot of different ways that the county reviews this use type right now. To detangle Chapter 25, which is the Business License Code for the county, and Chapter 110, because right now you have to really look at both codes to know what to do with an outdoor entertainment request. And then to establish a process where things that are currently done annually temporarily may be able to be done on a more permanent basis. So, those were our goals setting out. What does that mean? What's that look like? What are these amendments in a pragmatic way? Where do they go? It's amendments to Article 302 for changing the land use tables themselves to Article 304 to make sure that there's a consistent definition and expanded definition of outdoor entertainment. And in this case, a new definition for livestock events. Article 310, which is temporary uses, to make sure the outdoor entertainment temporary use description there is consistent with everywhere else it's described. And then a new article, Article 338, which really pulls together all of the processes, all of the requirements in order to establish this. And then, the last thing that will have to be done that you won't get an opportunity to see are those amendments to Chapter 25, the Business License Changes, that will be initiated when, if you should choose to send this amendment forward to the County Commission, we will initiate those Business License Code changes to be consistent with what you're recommending at that time. So, on October 3rd, we brought you the original public hearing for this item. And it was also a request to initiate and then to have the public hearing on it. And so, you asked about the public input that had come prior to that public hearing date. You heard from the public that evening. And then at the end of that night, you decided that you would initiate the amendment, but that you didn't want to have further discussion on the actual proposed amendments, that you wanted to do an initiation and then ask staff to consider all of the public input that you had discussed that evening and to consider if there were any appropriate changes to the proposal to respond to those, to that public input. So, the public input centered on four main questions. This was throughout the entire process, not only what you got to hear on the 3rd, but leading up to the 3rd. These were the four main questions. Is an administrative review process acceptable or should a public hearing always be required? Administrative review being something that would be done in-house. What regulatory zones are appropriate? If we're going to expand the regulatory zones, where should we expand them to? And maybe more importantly, where should we keep this use out? Number three, are equestrian events distinct enough from other activities to warrant their own definition? One of the most common, perhaps the most common outdoor entertainment-type event we get is an equestrian event. And for, as deep into our local culture and local societies the equestrian events are, you'd think we'd have a more specific approach to them, but we don't. And the code has always kind of treated it a little bit as an orphan use. And so, we determined through this process to consider whether that was appropriate to continue that approach or not. And then the fourth question that people had was, should a periodic review or renewal be required? Meaning that when one of these outdoor entertainment permits is granted, should it be built into the process that it has to be renewed every so many years? Or that you have to come back before the board or some other kind of renewal? Or what should that periodic review be for these? So, those were the four main questions that people had. Those, there were a lot of questions. But these four issues and questions really incorporate almost all of the input that we got. So, the first one, is administrative review process acceptable or should a public hearing be required? So, in the original draft that we brought forward on the 3rd, there was an administrative review process proposed for everything from 100, 175. We changed it in this particular draft. We had, in the original draft, from 75 to 999 would be an administrative review process, meaning that it would not go before board. Currently, the code doesn't, currently, the code requires that from, requires a public hearing from 299 up or from 300 up. One of the things we were looking at was trying to smooth the path, to make things a little easier. We felt that was part of our BCC direction. And so, we said, "Okay, if you're less than 1,000 people, it's an administrative process." So, the public comment on that was that the public comment strongly favored maintaining a public hearing process for anything over 299. There was, there were no favorable responses. There was no favorable public input on the idea of moving to an administrative process. So, the revised draft that's brought forward tonight requires a public hearing process for all outdoor entertainment of 100 or more. Trying to keep from having, once again, too many tiers of review and not starting there at the 299 or 300 and breaking it up into a bunch of different sections, we're proposing to take it down from 100 to, if you're over 100, you need, you need to have a public hearing. So, the impact of this is, the practical impact is that all permanent outdoor entertainment uses, if you're coming before and asking for a permanent use to establish it on the property, you're going to have to have a special use permit with a hearing, a public hearing before a board. For temporary uses, if you're asking to do it over a weekend or over a few days, we're not proposing to really change that too much from the way it is right now. But what would happen is in an administrative process for those temporary uses up to 999. As soon as you get to 1,000 people, it doesn't matter whether you want to do it for a single day or whether you want to establish it as a use on your property. If you're 1,000 or more, you need to go to a public hearing. So, the second main question, where should these be allowed? The original draft expanded it to, right now, you know, you can only do it in industrial, tourist, commercial, and parks and recreation. That's the only place it's available anywhere. Industrial, tourist, commercial, parks and recreation. So, we expanded that to include general commercial, neighborhood commercial, low-density rural, medium-density, high-density, low-density rural. We expanded it across the board. There was a lot of public comment on this. This is one of the more, one of the areas where we got more public comment. Their biggest concern was not only the regulatory zone, but the size of the parcel. There was a very large interest in requiring a minimum lot size. So, they really requested that we keep this out of residential zones and that we establish a minimum lot size of at least 10 acres. So, the revised draft says we're only going to expand it to, for residential, to low-density rural and general rural. All those other residential zones, we're no longer proposing that it be allowed there. So, it would be allowed in all of the commercial zones and then in low-density rural and general rural. But it would also establish a minimum acreage of 10 acres. So, I think it was, several months ago, I was here on another item. And we had a reason to discuss how many general rural parcels throughout the county are non-conforming size-wise. There are hundreds, I brought you the numbers. I can't remember what they were. There are hundreds and hundreds of general rural parcels that are less than 40 acres, many of which are even 5 acres. And so, what we've said is you can be general rural non-conforming, but you have to have at least 10 acres. If you're going to be in low-density rural or general rural, you have to have 10 acres. Now, if you're in general commercial, we said we're not going to hold you to that 10 acres because theoretically, then you're in a commercial zone. You're in a commercial area, in an area that's more appropriate for this type of use. And we can address those issues more appropriately than through that special use permit process. So, we're not proposing to hold people to the 10-acre minimum on the commercial and industrial zoning. But we are proposing it for the residential zoning. So, the practical impact of this alternative is that permanent outdoor entertainment uses in residential zones will be restricted to areas with large-lot rural zoning. An exception would allow suburban residential zones, actually, the way the code's written, it would allow any zone if they're identified in an approved subdivision map and developed as a non-residential use, golf course, for example, and are part of a broad application that includes other permitted regulatory zones. That almost sounds like it was written for something specific, doesn't it? Well, it was. The large golf courses that we have around town, Montro, that has the big Barracuda Tournament. Then there's Arrow Creek and some of the others. When they were developed as golf courses, the zoning on the specific course wasn't necessarily changed from the MDS or whatever it was. It was just established that it's part of the golf course. So, for instance, Barracuda wouldn't be allowed to take advantage of this. It wouldn't be allowed to do it at all because so much of their golf courses got these strange zonings, residential zoning, all different zoning. But it's identified, it's developed as a golf course. It's identified on the map as a golf course. It's a golf course. And so, we're saying when that type of situation occurs, it's clearly, they're clearly not trying to put this in a suburb somewhere, in a suburban development tract lot somewhere. This is, they're trying to put it on a golf course. Let's allow it. So, that's what this exception is about. But the revision would not allow outdoor entertainment as a permanent use on any of the residential zonings except for low-density rural and general rural. And it incorporates that 10-acre minimum lot size. So, the third question, what about equestrian events? Are they different enough that they should have their own situation? The original draft includes equestrian events under the definition of outdoor entertainment. We included it in there. Currently, these types of events or processes, commercial stables, as we mentioned. The commercial stables definition really only loosely covers what actually happens at equestrian events. And so, we're trying to make that work a little better for us in the code. So, the public thought that equestrian and other livestock ordering events are not only culturally important to the character of rural Washoe County, but they're also distinct from other outdoor entertainment events such as music theater, venues, golf tournaments, and art festivals. It's just, they're completely different things, was the feedback that we got. So, the revised draft proposes to create a distinct and separate use for equestrian events that adequately describes the types of activities undertaken at such events. The livestock event, as we're proposing to call it, use type would be permitted with a special use permit from the Board of Adjustment. The livestock events' use type would be permitted in all the regulatory zones where commercial stables are currently allowed. So, we're not creating some non-conforming. We're not changing something. Somebody might be thinking, "Well, I could have done commercial stables last year. Now, I can't do it." We're trying to be consistent in that. And then, if you remember, Warm Springs had their own... And then, if you remember, Warm Springs had their own definition of equestrian events and equestrian uses, and we're proposing to change that some to be consistent. With this change, Warm Springs can continue doing it their own way, in the way that they came up with for themselves. We don't need to make any changes to the Warm Springs modifiers, or to the Warm Springs area plan. They can go ahead and continue to do it their way, and in the rest of the county, we'll establish this, for this process. So, I haven't heard from anybody from Warm Springs, they weren't horribly upset at the idea that we were changing it, because it wasn't gonna really impact them that much, but I can't tell you that I've heard from anybody in Warm Springs that they're happy or not regarding this change. So the practical impact of doing this is that livestock equestrian events would have a dedicated definition in the development code, they'll continue to be allowed where they're currently permitted. And the approach works in conjunction with the other proposed revisions to restrict the location where outdoor entertainment uses are permitted, without unduly restricting the location where these equestrian events can go. And as mentioned, no amendments to Warm Springs modifiers are necessary. So the last of the four areas of public input, should periodic review or renewal be required for outdoor entertainment permits? This was, this is another area where the public was very interested in this idea, and in fact, the public was very much in favor of it. So, the original draft has provisions for revocation of outdoor entertainment permits, you can revoke one, just like we can revoke any of the permits that we got. It also allows conditions of approval that require periodic review of the permit. So as a condition, you can put that in there. Periodic reviews would look at public complaints and the ability of existing conditions to mitigate negative impacts. However, the draft does not require a condition regarding periodic review, but approaches each permit on a case-by-case basis. So, public comments are all in favor of requiring outdoor permits to be renewed on a periodic basis, public likes that idea. Such that the permit is never seen as a permanent entitlement, but one that needs to be periodically renewed. A periodic renewal process would also consider public complaints and the existing conditions. The revised draft creates a separate section that provides language that more clearly supports periodic review of outdoor entertainment uses, but does not create the requirement for periodic renewal. The activities that may occur under the auspices of outdoor entertainment are varied. While it's clear that some proposals for outdoor entertainment uses may need to be reviewed, and the conditions reconsidered, there are also many potential uses for which very little periodic review may be necessary. Staff's concern with creating a required renewal process is that on a case-by-case basis, this could be valuable, or it could be a regulatory burden with little benefit to the public. So, this clearly is the one area where staff balked a little bit at the public's desire to put in a requirement for periodic renewal, a requirement that these aren't really permanent We absolutely understand where that sentiment is coming from, but we are concerned that if it's required, if it's built into the process, as these indeed aren't permanent entitlements, and do have to be renewed, that could be a big burden, depending on who you are, and what you're trying to accomplish. It could absolutely be the most appropriate condition in there, and we could still put that condition in there to make it possible, but it wouldn't be a requirement from the beginning. So, this is the one of the four areas of public input, this is the one where staff felt like we couldn't go as far as the public wanted us to go. So what we tried to do was to make it much more clear that this is a possibility, and much more clear that it's a good idea, and the new language is much more robust in its discussion of, not so much periodic renewal, but periodic review. So that's what we did, to respond to this one. So let's, just real quickly, try and remember now that temporary events are a little bit Temporary events are currently allowed in any zone, and we're not proposing to change What would happen under this code is that, instead of several different tiers of review, there would be three tiers of review for temporary events. If you're 99 or less, you're just a special event, and you go through the business license counter, just like you do now. And business license determines what agencies need to review you, and who needs to see you, and what sign-offs that you need. If you go over 99, up to 999, you get, as a temporary event, you would take advantage of that administrative process, where you don't go to a board. It's much like we do accessory dwellings now, it's the date, our detached accessory dwelling administrative review. It gets the same internal review as a special use permit, but the end game isn't a board, the end game is the director. So everything is the same, pretty much the same up to that point, except there is no public hearing, that's why we call it the administrative review. And that's how temporary events up to 999 would be reviewed. Then the third tier is, whether you're permanent or temporary, once you hit 1,000, you gotta go talk to the county commission. That's how, that's how we're doing, we're calling that a major entertainment event. So, the proposed review process that we have landed on, to propose tonight, is that temporary special event, 99 or fewer, temporary outdoor entertainment permit, 199 administrative permit, then we've got what we call the minor outdoor entertainment permit, which is the 100 to 999, that's a special use permit before the Board of Adjustment. A major outdoor entertainment permit is 1,000 or more, and that's a special use permit before the Board of County Commissioners. So those are the four different types of review that would occur for any kind of outdoor So once again, these were the goals, to broaden the definition, expand the range, reduce the number of tiers, detangle Chapter 25, and establish a process where currently permitted events annually, like Barracuda, Classical Tahoe, others, may have the opportunity to come in and get one permit. So to summarize for you, this is a complex development code amendment that reaches across county code chapters. It seeks to consolidate and simplify the county's current approach to permitting and licensing outdoor entertainment events. It seeks to establish a balance of speed, predictability, and comprehensive agency review. If you remember, that agency review was a big point of public input, but I think we left the October 3 meeting with people satisfied that there is a robust agency review, regardless of what tier you're at. So, that comprehensive agency review, that's consistent with Washoe County's longstanding of the public input. And the proposed draft, we feel, does respond to the public input that we've had up through October 3. And the, I didn't mention it, the extra workshop that we had after October 3 was the night of your November 7 Planning Commission meeting, we held it in the lobby, captured a few extra people that way. And we used a process with dot voting, different options, and people were able to vote. And so when you saw on those four questions, the public input, that's the public response, that's really, a lot of that came from the November 7 meeting, was how people responded on November 7. That's all I have for you. Of course, like I said, we can go back and remind you about any of the other details regarding this, if you'd like. We can discuss whatever you have, here's a proposed motion for you, if you're willing to go forward this evening. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Do we have questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Chesney.
Eric, just, and I'm not trying, I'm not trying to, huh?
Make sure that we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Not trying to throw you a curve, just, just for example, like we, when we did the winery grape-growing ordinance deal a year or so ago, so if, does, as outdoor entertainment, does this include, like, the guy that's got a five-acre parcel with some grapes on it, and he uses his garage for a wine tasting on the weekend, does this go to that level?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Chesney, one of the bigger questions regarding this outdoor entertainment use type is how private activities on private land occur. A lot of the questions we had throughout the process was, what if I have a wedding, and I invite 200 people, what if I have a class reunion? And really, the way that we approach it is, if it's, if you're inviting members of the public, then you become subject to this code. And your zoning becomes relevant, the size of your parcel becomes relevant, what you're trying to do, whether you need business licenses for people who might be coming in to serve your party, all of that becomes relevant, when you start inviting the public in. If you're just inviting in friends and family, it doesn't apply to you.
Okay.
And so that's the threshold that we try and apply on a daily basis.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lawson.
Madam Chair, just a comment. Mr. Young, I was very impressed with the public workshop you had, I was able to attend. I can tell you that the people that attended commented to me how much they appreciated that opportunity to provide input. I know that this was a very difficult process, and I commend you on the work you've done, and the compromises you've made, especially with respect to the fourth part about review. I think that's an excellent compromise, understanding the demands on your agency, and the needs to get the public involvement. So I think you've done an outstanding job, I just wanted to say that for the record.
Yes, very much so. Okay, do we have any public comment?
We do, we have Chris Hoff, followed by Terry Doncic.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Chris Hoff, I'm the Executive Director of the Reno Tahoe Open Foundation. We own and operate the Barracuda Championship that Mr. Young referenced in his presentation. And it won't take long, I just wanted to come up and speak in support of these changes. It just so happens that I was here in 99, when we did our very first outdoor festival application, we worked with Bob Webb, who is still there. And as I look at the process that we are going through now, 19, 20 years later, by changing the code, and revising it to a special use or administrative use permit, we'll streamline the process, I believe, not only from the applicant's side, but also from staff's side, when it comes to the review, either by the BCC, or the different agencies regarding conditions, we are in full support of that. The success of our event relies on us following the conditions that are put in place by the different agencies, and we hang our hat on a lot of the relationships that we have with the county agencies, and it's because of them that we have been able to be so successful. So, I just wanted to come up and voice my support for this change.
Thank you.
Terry Doncic, 9355 Wigwamwe, Reno, Nevada. My question goes back to, this is right next door, it's the Reno Sparks Livestock Event Center. How does this affect events that come into, actually, this livestock event center was designed for livestock events? Does it put an extra process on top of them to come in and put their event on, does it put an extra cost on them? Because from what I'm seeing here, it's talking about public parks, public facilities, that is a public facility. Does that put an added burden on the people coming in to produce their event?
Mr. Young?
Madam Chair, that's a good and important question, the answer is no. This code is, specifically exempts properties that are developed for the purpose of having an event like that. So, and plus, we're in the city here, so what, we're only talking about in unincorporated areas, and typically, what we're talking about with the livestock events are, they're almost always equestrian events, not exclusively, but almost always equestrian events for parcels, say, in rural Washoe Valley, in rural, in Warm Springs, Palomino Valley, places where people will come in for a weekend and put on a demonstration show, various different equestrian-type events, but they're typically fairly small, a few hundred people at the most, is the proliferation of events that we like, that we see. But to answer the gentleman's question, if you are a parks and recreation facility, if you're an arena, if you're already developed for that purpose, then you don't need to get permits to do what you're developed to do. There's a specific exemption written into the ordinance for those places.
Any other questions?
No, I just wanted to thank Eric for that clarification, because, like I said, Washoe County, as a county property, is excluded from this new process for the livestock.
With the exception, though, when they meet those person thresholds, yes. Then that other stuff kicks in. Any other public comment?
No further public comment.
Cal, close the public comment and bring it back to the board. Any further questions from Commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Commissioner Hearn, and Commissioner Bruce.
I personally have a problem with it not being, with there being an option for no review whatsoever. I find it fascinating that planning commissioners aren't permanently appointed, and county commissioners aren't permanently elected, and a lot of other things like that. And I feel like a five-year review process, or required review, would eliminate 80% of the recurrence of having to be publicly reviewed, but still have a requirement to step up and face the questions on a regular basis. And so I can't support it without there being a required regular review of some periodic basis. That's my comment.
Commissioner Hearn.
Well, I, my comment is somewhat to the same point, although I would support the suggestion of letting the reviews go, but I think that it is important that any of the permits, as they are granted, would have to make sure that they understood that it is subject to review, that, you know, for a variety of reasons, and it's not that they are entitled forever to continue this event. I mean, I would think that there would be some language in that, that would make that clear, that this wasn't an entitlement, I don't know what they had proposed along those lines, but to that extent, I would agree with that.
Commissioner Doncic.
Just to go on top of that, one of the questions that I had was, not that it requires review all the time, but what would be the triggers? Would you put something in their paperwork that would explain to them what the triggers were, they would automatically kick off a review, so if they didn't do any of those things, then it wouldn't kick one? I mean, I'm just trying to...
They're turning on the...
Okay.
There we go.
Can you zoom, or do I zoom?
Because I don't ever see any zooms in here.
Can you open up the very middle of the page right now?
I mean, they talked about property owners and things, but...
Madam Chair, this is the language that staff has proposed regarding, this is the new language that we inserted. This, there was no section discussing periodic review before, so we inserted a section specifically regarding periodic review, and this is what it says.
Did you read it?
I'd be happy to. The Board of County Commissioners, the Board of Adjustment, the Director or his designee will determine if periodic review of the conditions of approval is appropriate. If a periodic review is required, the approval will conclude timeframes and methods for the periodic review and a mechanism for imposing new conditions if the existing conditions are determined to be inadequate to ensure public health, safety, and welfare.
So that's just a broad term? There's no actual specifics that would kick it off, that you have a listing of, that you would follow?
Specific thresholds or standards that might require periodic review?
Mm-hmm.
No, we don't. We, our, our, and it, it's not that we didn't think of that. The very specific purpose here is to allow the Board of Adjustment, or the Board of County Commissioners, or the Director to look at each application individually and say, this, this, because you're proposing this, whatever it is you're proposing, we can't even, I can't even begin to anticipate what somebody might throw at us in terms of an outdoor entertainment use. And so, and, and to try to not anticipate that and be wrong, we're just going to say on a case-by-case basis, if this is necessary, you're going to have to do it. But there may be times when it's not necessary, or when it, when the review is really minimal. There may be times when the review has to be significant. And so our, our proposal, our concept, and perhaps you don't like it, perhaps you're not going to go for it, but our concept is that you get to make that decision each and every time.
Commissioner Herran.
You know, I think public outcry is very effective. So I would, you know, having that language there, I would support it as, as drafted.
Madam Chair, I...
Commissioner Chesney.
If, if you look at that language, at least the way I interpret it, it could be complaint-driven very easily. Say some event's too noisy or whatever, somebody calls in and makes a complaint, that, that can, that can, that would trigger a review, wouldn't it? Or could trigger a review?
Madam Chair, that's, that's, that's how we anticipated. That's how it works now. And so we anticipated that's how it will work in, in the future. You can, perhaps the best thing we have right now is, is the aggregate pits. And you remember where aggregate pits used to, they had to be, it was, it was in there. They had to come back before you every five years. They had to come back here. And you actually asked us to stop doing that. You actually asked us to change that because you had to see aggregate pits too often. And so the whole concept of, of the aggregate pit review is based on complaints, not only complaints from neighbors, but complaints in, in general. How, how is it working? So that's the concept that we're trying to move forward with here, is that we, we have a sense that if it's not working, we're going to know about it.
Other questions? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Chesney.
I moved that after giving reason consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission recommend approval of WDC A 17-0003 to amend Washoe County Chapter 110 Development Code within Article 302 Allowed Uses. Article 304 Use Classification System, Article 310 Temporary Uses, and Article 338 Outdoor Entertainment. I further move to authorize the Chair to sign the resolution contained in Attachment A on behalf of the Washoe County Planning Commission and to direct the staff to present the report to the commission, with this commission's recommendation to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners within 60 days of today's date. This recommendation is for approval, is, for approval is based on all of the following four findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110, 818 dot 15E.
Second.
Any discussion? It's been moved by Commissioner Chesney and seconded by Commissioner Herran.
I think, I think that, you know, based on, on our discussion, and certainly as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Young and the rest of the staff have done an excellent job in trying to simplify this process. And while there is a little bit of question on the, the regulation and bringing it back for approval, I think that that question was answered very adequately, and I will certainly support the motion.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you. We're now at item 10, Chair and Commission items, request for future agenda items.
Madam Chair, I have one thing on that last item. Could you, for the record, just announce the vote breakdown? I think there was one nay.
Commissioner Bruce voted in opposition.
Thank you.
Future agenda items. Mr. Lloyd, did you have anything?
Nothing on my end, thanks.
And request for information from staff?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Chesney.
About October, the first meeting in October, two years ago, the county commission rejected a modification for the cargo container article and sent direction back to staff with four specific items. I've got the, the CD of the, of the meeting at home, but I'd kind of like to get an update on that. I'd, I'd like to get this cargo container thing put to bed. It, it is, you know, I'd like to get it done before I die, so...
Are you trying to tell us that?
Yeah.
No, no, no.
I'm, I'm not in a hurry, but, you know, it's, it's one of those things, if you drag it out long enough, it could happen.
We'll bring a report next month.
Thank you.
Any other requests for information from staff?
Just a follow-up. A while back, I'd asked for development plans, not just for the county, but for the city of Sparks, the city of Reno. I got Washoe County's so we could have a better total picture when we're looking at an area. I haven't heard anything back about from Sparks or the city of Reno.
You mean for approved but not yet built?
Yes, list.
And I believe that through regional, the regional staff is working on a very similar map or spreadsheet. I'll see what they have available and bring that back by next month.
Thank you. Item 11, Directors and Legal Counsel Items, Reports on Previous Planning Commission Items. Mr. Lloyd?
Okay, thank you. You may remember Development Code Amendment, DCA 170002, that was the water rights project. That code amendment was adopted by the BCC at their December 12 meeting. Similarly, the, the DCA, the code amendment for the care of the infirm to expand that, to offer that to the caregiver as well as the recipient of that care, that was also adopted by the BCC at their December 12 meeting. One other piece of information, we brought to you a possible time for the Reno Stead Court or Joint Meeting with the Reno Planning Commission in February. Received word from staff at the city that that meeting will no longer take place in February, they had to push that back. We don't have a tentative date at this time, but, but I'll bring that back before this planning commission to see your availability.
So the February 20 meeting is canceled?
That is, that is no, yes, that no longer is in place. However, the joint CABNAB scheduled for this month, the 16th of this month, is still a go.
Okay. Legal information and updates?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say real quick to all of you that from the legal advisor standpoint, I really appreciate that the commission really makes a solid effort to stick to the agenda, and, and I don't have to do a whole lot of, you know, of hurting, and I, as it were. And I, I think you guys are, should be commended for that. I think it's, it makes my job easier, I think it's good for the public, you know, all those things, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Do we have any general public comment? We do. Roger Edwards.
Okay, for the record, Roger Edwards, 3405 War Paint Circle, Golden Valley. And I don't know why you're being so nice to Nate, you don't have to. You know, I was on the commission, on this planning commission back in 2010 when all these master plans and all these character, character, neighborhood character management thing, we went through all hundreds and hundreds of hours. And Gold, and Sun Valley was described as the eyesore for Washoe County. And we put those regulations in there after a lot of discussion. We wanted the houses right next, and the lots right next to Golden, to Sun Valley Drive to go to that commercial, so they showed a solid face of commercial. We didn't have a lot of neighborhood commercial property even in the county, and that was identified as some of that. And I drive that thing almost every day to avoid 395, so I'm on, I know what's on, on Sun Valley Drive, trust me. And there really aren't 100 or so people that are going to be impacted like that one neighbor was. And I, I'm amazed that you guys didn't point out to him that what happened to his lot that he can't build on now was that it was turned into a commercial lot and worth more than it was when he bought it. What the idea was, was to get a commercial face along that whole strip, and there's really less than a couple dozen actual single mobile home lots that end up right on Sun Valley Drive. There's several mobile home parks that exit onto Sun Valley Drive, and you could have conditioned it to have sound walls or some kind of landscaping or some kind to mitigate that impact. But that, that regulation impacted very few people in the neighborhood, and now you've let it change back to what it was. We tried to get that strip to be all commercial because of the development Highland Park above the back of Sun Valley and so forth. And it was, that was exactly what we planned to do, was to turn those lots into non-mobile home lots anymore. That's why that regulation was like that. And that owner went through the one year of vacant condition and everything else. He could have built a, he could have built a 7-Eleven on that piece of property. So I'm, I'm upset that we changed that after all the hard work that went into developing that criteria. So, and nobody asked Roger about a plan or PELM, how, how, how that was arrived at so that you could have understood some of the background of what was, where that, we weren't just picking on that one poor homeowner. That wasn't it. We were trying to get the face of Sun Valley improved. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Any other public comment?
No further public comment.
Okay. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, thank you, everyone.